Good evening. I'd like to call the February council meeting of the Atherton Channel Drainage District to order for February 20th at 7:00 PM.
Not to mention the city council.
And the city council. Did I not say the city council? Okay. And I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Shall we all stand?
My pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is sent us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
So, may I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Weef?
Here.
Councilmember Carlson?
Here.
Councilmember Wiener?
Here.
Councilmember Doggie?
Here.
Mayor McGraw?
He's here, too.
Mayor Lewis?
Here. So, we have a forum. Thank you. We have a unanimous forum.
Pass yours down to Bill, where you guys will have them.
Okay. So, we're changing microphones. Okay. So, one of the really, really fun things that the mayor gets to do is proclamation. So, tonight, we have two. And one of them is not here, so we'll only do the one. And it is honoring Atherton Police Reserve Officer Pop Bruce Potts and his wife Ruth Potts. Would you come forward, and we will give you a proclamation? So, good to see you. I just will speak into here and Chief Flint also. So, on last Wednesday night at the Ensignal School was the annual DARE Awards. Now, you might want to ask what DARE stands for. And I will tell you, it is the Drug Abuse Resistance Education Program. And Officer Potts and his wife Ruth have been doing it for over 12 years in our town of Atherton, Menlo Park, but another eight, six years in other jurisdictions, in San Carlos. And I've had the honor to share the presentations with our Chief Flint the last couple of years, and it is an amazing scene. This last time, 170, 170 fifth graders got their certificate of completion of the DARE education program. And so, Officer Potts and his wife Ruth are retiring, and it's very sad. And so, on behalf of the town of Atherton, I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas Bruce Potts, a reserve police officer with more than 10 years of service with the Atherton Police Department, and his wife Ruth Potts were instrumental in creating and implementing the DARE program for the town of Atherton. And whereas the city council of the town of Atherton, along with the entire Atherton community, would like to honor the many contributions that Ruth and Bruce Potts have made to the Atherton Police Department, the community, and our schools. And whereas Bruce and Ruth's 10-year commitment and dedication in creating and implementing an outstanding DARE curriculum in Atherton for our elementary school students, and whereas Bruce and Ruth's skills and expertise in leading and teaching have been appealing to children throughout the town of Atherton on the importance of personal accountability to just say no to drugs. And whereas Bruce and Ruth have worked tirelessly over the years by educating more than 2,000 children, which equates to over 2,500 hours of DARE instruction, along with the biannual, ever-popular hot dog cookouts with full police force in attendance, and DARE graduations, red ribbon contests, and the creation of our Atherton Police Personnel Individualized DARE cards. And now, for as mayor of the town of Atherton and on behalf of the entire Atherton City Council, I hereby commend the outstanding community service performed by Bruce Potts, along with his wife Ruth, who have represented the town in the highest esteem and prepared our future leaders of tomorrow with the empowerment to stand tall and away from drug abuse. The city council is proud to present you with this proclamation, and we greatly appreciate your service and wish you the best in your retirement. So, the chief has the very unenviable task of trying to replace this pair to educate our next fifth graders.
It's gonna be you and me.
Who gets to wear the uniform?
I don't know the targeting part.
Yeah, just one quick comment. There are DARE programs, and there are DARE programs, and then there's the Bruce and Ruth Potts program. And I've seen it in three or four other jurisdictions. I actually went through the training and wrote a white paper on it for a college course years ago. But the level that you guys have taken this is absolutely amazing. I explored it first year, and to think that they've done that for this community for 10 years is unbelievable. And I know the time they put into it, most of it is unpaid. And the reaction that those kids have with, you know, the chemistry of the two of you, and the photographs, and the art things, and the hot dog cookouts, and all the things that go along with it to, you know, culminating in that graduation. It's just absolutely amazing. And I think the challenge for the staff is, is how do we keep the program going? And that's, that's gonna be a difficult task, because people like you are very rare. So, you've done a tremendous job.
Do you wanna say anything?
I don't even know what to say, to be honest. I'm not the first...
You got it.
Got to talk in a minute. Mike, okay. I want to thank the town for enabling us to do this. I mean, I pulled this lady in the other night. She walks into 170 kids. The room is vibrating, doesn't even, doesn't even bother her. And that, all of the mayors have done that.
Of course.
And they've stepped up to it and allowed us to, to do this. And I, really, I think it makes a difference, because it's a whole lot easier to say to get a kid not to get started than to try and rehabilitate him and put him in jail.
It has been an honor to work beside my husband, and I totally believe in what he does, or what he did. And I know it's bittersweet for him, because he really loves teaching the DARE program. What I appreciate is the ability to stand next to him as he teaches values. Our school system is so into educating, and I'm not saying science isn't important, I'm not saying math's not important, I'm not saying reading is not important, but the issue of character and the issues of values. And that's the piece that Bruce was able to bring into the classroom. And I thank God that he allowed us to be able to be so loved by you guys, by the police department, by the school, in order that we could do this. So, we thank all of you.
Madam Mayor, could I just say a word, please? You know, I was involved with Bruce and Ruth many, many times in the DARE program. I just wish that every primary school could have a program like this. This is where we start teaching kids not to use drugs. And, and the program they put in place was so much fun for the kids that I don't think they even realized that they were learning to stay away from drugs. What a wonderful program that... And I mean, Ruth has done at least as much work as Bruce, I gotta say, because she, her presentations with hundreds of pictures, mostly fun pictures of the kids, is just, I just have to say, Bruce and Ruth, thank you so much. You have been wonderful, and I, it's gonna be very hard to replace you, but I certainly hope that we can try. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We've put together an 11-minute video presentation, and I think you guys should post it on YouTube, so we can all enjoy it. Our next proclamation is in honor of the donor of the two statues that are now installed at Bulbuck Palmer Park. Susan Blake, she is a Hillsborough resident. Her husband deceased, was an art collector, and so she donated both of those pieces in his memory. I won't take the time to read the proclamation copies in the agenda packets, but we will hand this to her with our letter of gratitude for those pieces of art. And I think that our almanac reporter is going to do a story on it also, if I think she said she was going to. So, moving on to the next item is the time for public comments. But before I open up to the public at large, I'm going to invite one of our residents, William Grimley, to speak. I know he has a very busy schedule, and he's going to speak on an agenda item that's later in the packet, but it's a very important update that he's gonna give us, and I'm gonna waive the three-minute time limit for him. So, thank you very much, William, for your time tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm going to give my occasional briefing on the little town that could versus the big train that couldn't. I don't know if you saw the governor's State of the State address, but he spent two minutes, two minutes, telling the legislature of this state and the burn time of airtime of this people of California, the story of the little train that could. Give me a break. All right. Let me talk about four items tonight. The first in the high-speed rail is that the bids from the five consortia who were pre-qualified were given to the High-Speed Rail Authority for CP1, the first 30 miles south of Resad towards Fresno, on the 18th of January. There has been no public release of those bids. Senator Mark DeSallegnay, the head of the Transportation Committee in the Senate of California, is going crazy. He's demanding them, and they are stonewalling the behavior that we've become accustomed to, but not particularly the senators. The other piece of that, which is actually making the news, is that each of the four "losers" close quote get paid $2 million, let me repeat that, $2 million for having made the bid. So, if you know, and you are a contractor and one of those people, you know what that's all about. You put in a bid that you hire three high school kids to prepare and collect your get-out-of-jail card free. That is pretty much part of the general scam. Second thing I'd like to address tonight is that the project schedule, particularly the start date, is slippy. The start date that was proposed, and still even as of, as recently as December, is still promulgated by the authority, was supposed to be September of last year. Don't ask me how they still pretend that it's last year. Now, it's important, the start date, because $5 billion of the $6 billion, three from the feds matched by three of the state, $5 billion of that must be spent and reimbursed by September 30th of 2017. That is the end of the fiscal year 2017. If they don't spend the money, who knows? If they don't spend the money, in theory, the federal government can demand all of that that has been spent to be taken back under certain clauses and provisions of the stewardship of the federal monies. That's a very serious and very dangerous situation our governors put us in. Now, the project management team, otherwise known as Parsons Brinckhoff, has issued two reports in the last few months that contradict each other on the issue of when they're starting. One says that they're going to start in March 2014. Hmm, that's somewhat later than September 2015. Even stranger, one just came out last week, says they really won't even start until November 2015. That's a very late start. So, we're really not sure, I'm sure they're not sure either, when they're going to get started, because besides the first 30 miles in this, wrecking about 100 farms, they have no environmental clearances. They're at the 15% engineering grade, meaning below grade that any contractor can bid on it, in their estimates of the work to be done. But what if they actually do get started on March the 1st, 2014? There's something called a burn rate. If they work a single shift, five-day work week, the burn rate would be $5.7 million a day, which is about three to, two to three times what the burn rate on the Bay Bridge has been at $1.8 million per day. The Bay Bridge, incidentally, because of that burn rate, is five times above the original projections of its cost. It went from $1.2 billion to it's now over $7 billion. Secondly, if they start on November the 15th of, November in 2015, I'm sorry, the burn rate would be about $10 million a day, needless to say, that's four to six times the burn rate on the Bay Bridge. So, you can see again the danger, the risk that the governor is playing with in terms of continuing to promote this project, continuing to say it will be done, when he is actually risking $3 billion of federal money that the feds can demand back. The importance of that is not particularly that the governor's own party's administration holds the White House in dissent, but more importantly, than on the 16th of January of this year, Congressman Jeff Denham, a good colleague of mine now, was appointed the director of the House Subcommittee on Rail Pipelines and Hazards and Waste. Jeff Denham is a strong, vocal, and articulate opponent of the waste that this project has already created, the waste that it's likely to create in his district in the Central Valley, and the lack of transparency in the continued process of not having an investment-grade project plan. Second, third item is that travel times have become a joke. You may not know it, but in, when you voted for high-speed rail, can you do it again? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. When you voted for high-speed rail in September 2008, there was a provision in there that said you could get on a train in Los Angeles, and you could make a ride to San Francisco on dedicated high-speed rail in the year 2020, and you would get from LA to San Francisco, or vice versa, in two hours and 40 minutes. When the new blended plan came along, the chairman, Chairman Richard of the California High-Speed Rail Authority, made an announcement in April of last year, as he introduced something called the Phase 1 Blended System, which uses the tracks here, along those right there, to blend the high-speed rail portion from Palmdale to San Jose with Caltrain, and then from Palmdale to Union Station in Los Angeles. Chairman Richard, in April 2012, was asked at a press conference, can you still make the two-hour and 14-minute deadline? He asserted, yes, we can. So, one of our local residents, Kathy Hamilton, some of you may be familiar, asked for the documentation behind that claim, because there had never been any documentation provided for the entire high-speed rail ride from Los Angeles to San Francisco. After fiddling about, being denied it at least one time by council for the authority, the records group came back and said, no documentation exists. We, the chairman's remarks were made on the experience and optimism of the engineers. How's that for a good engineering, Jim? You like that? The optimism of the engineers. All right. So, she kept bird-dogging it. She kept getting told by Council Philence that there were drafts being made of a document that would indeed prove that the blended system could do it in two hours and 40 minutes, but she could not have them because they're drafts. Council, excuse me, Kathy then got together with some of the legal counsel in the Central Valley that we're in contact with and working with. They said, that's BS, Ms. Hamilton. They have to turn it over, because in April of 2012, the authority adopted and certified that business plan, so how is it that they can pretend that these are only a draft? Now, last week, they issued a six-page memorandum, which indeed attempts to justify the two-hour and 40-minute ride under the blended system. Let me give you some of the highlights of that. They will average 220 miles an hour from Los Angeles to San Francisco. Well, excuse me, you can't go that fast out there, and you can't go that fast. That's an average. And they give it in runtimes, all right, which means like aircraft takeoff and aircraft landing. So, where do you pick up passengers along the way? Do you bother with them? Well, the only thing they might be able to do is, in the dead of night, run one empty train between San Francisco, between Los Angeles and San Francisco, excuse me. Secondly, think of this fact, that 220 mile-an-hour train is going both down the Tehachapi grade and up the Catchy grade at 220 miles an hour. God bless you if you lived through that one. Now, they keep making promises in this document, which are just more and more ridiculous. It's already gaining some press attention, because it's clearly a post hoc justification of not having any, any documentation and depending upon the optimism of their engineers. My final item concerns the Toss Fukata in Kings County lawsuit. We go to trial on that on the 31st of May. The attorney general and the governor will spend millions of dollars to try to defeat it. But we call it our jujitsu, or, thank you, George, the judo trial, because we're using the strengths of their promises to defeat them. The basic strategy of that trial, or our plaintiff's argument, is, Your Honor, here is what the voters voted for in 2008. A one-ride, San Francisco, Los Angeles, two hours, 40 minutes, on a dedicated high-speed rail line that is electrified. Your Honor, today, we have a blended system, which is partially on high-speed rail, partially on conventional rail, which has no chance of getting the funding that they assert they're going to have. So, is it difficult, Your Honor, to see what the difference is? Well, the attorney general will make a very strong case that, oh, it's all in the future. It will happen, Your Honor. Just believe, just continue to believe. Well, we've been working on court documents, I have in fact, for the last few months. That's why I'm wearing the eye shadow tonight. And we were lucky to, three weeks ago, actually, to have Stuart Flashman, who some of you are familiar with. Stuart Flashman was attorney for the city and for Menlo Park in two successful lawsuits. Stuart has joined the legal team, and he was one of now a, I don't wanna count them, a bevy of lawyers, some who are pro bono on this, some of whom are funded by people I don't even wanna ask who the money comes from. But indeed, we think we have a very good chance of winning that lawsuit. We know they will appeal. We know that they will attempt to crush us, but we think we have a good chance. Thank you. I'll take questions.
William, thank you for coming in. Can you tell us the status of the land acquisition, where that stands in the Central Valley?
Sure. If you look at one of the project management team, i.e. Parsons Brinckhoff's, most recent publicly available schedule, they are running anywhere from 14 to 18 months behind, even awarding the contracts to the companies that will go out and make the assessments. We know that the 100 farmers in the first, 100 plus minus, farmers in the first 30 miles whose properties will either be taken or devastated by the train have mostly, apparently one did cooperate, but mostly signed letters that say, you will not take my property unless you do it by, what do we call it, eminent domain, sorry. And not only that, but you will not come on my property to make an assessment. Now, I learned something that is quite interesting, if you have a moment for some detail. The process of eminent domain is, once you're turned down by the farmer for a purchase, you go to the Superior Court in Sacramento, which is run by people in one industry town, adjudicated by people in one industry town, and who will probably give the state the need for, the crucial need to have this piece of property. Well, that will happen, but that process generally takes eight to 12 months just to get that ruling. What the final ruling has to be is from a county judge in each of the counties that they will screen their train through. County judges are elected. They're elected by people who contribute to campaigns. The farmers contribute to campaigns, and we leave the rest of you to deduct.
Any other council members?
William, thank you first off for, for all your efforts here, and for alerting us the need for funding. Can you tell us, in the last month, have there been other towns that have stepped up? Has Menlo Park stepped up with a contribution? And has there been another fundraising that's taken place with regards to helping to defray these costs?
Correct. Thank you, Bill. To my understanding, and I'm not tracking this on a daily basis, you once again are put in the leadership position. That's why I call you the little town that could. Privately, a group called CCS HRA California is Concerned About High-Speed Rail Accountability, based out of Hanford, the town of Hanford, which has a wonderful ice cream shop. They have raised about $60,000, all right, and about, oh, let me think, roughly $20,000 of that has so far come from a group of businessmen and former businessmen who have been signers and what we have called principal reviewers of the material my colleague Bill Warren and I have produced, 1,654 pages and over 2,000 footnotes of material based around the financial aspects of the project, which, incidentally, the attorney general recently referred to as, oh, they're bloggers. Well, we know. I mean, I've been, luckily, I've been through one court case. I understand that it is not a love fest, and that the idea of denigrating your opponent is, is not unknown.
William, if they want to average 220 miles an hour based on picking up passengers and the different grades that are coming up, I would estimate the peak speed's probably gonna have to be nearly 400 miles an hour. I certainly wouldn't want to be in any train going that fast.
Well, I keep thinking of those arms they used to have when the express train came back, you put the mailbags, that's the passenger bag. And actually, the contract between the California High-Speed Rail Authority and the Federal Railroad Administration says, operate at 220 miles an hour with speeds reaching 250 miles an hour. Another bit that I've learned recently, and this is really interesting to me, hoping it's to you, there are no trains in the world that operate above 100, high-speed rail, that operate above 186 miles an hour. The reason is, when you hit something around 200 miles an hour, the vacuum under the train lifts the rocks, called ballast, you know, under the rail, lifts it and blows them out. There is a section of about 50 miles south of Lyon, which there's a wonderful TGV rail line between Paris and Marseille, south of Lyon, that is fenced in with very fine mashed fence, in which they test the trains up to 200 miles an hour. But no train in the world operates at 220. And that is part of the promise, that is part of the legislation. You see how, excuse my French, wild-ass all this was in 2008, it's like, but you know, remember, it's very hard that once they start turning dirt, to stop them. It's like DARE. Better to stop them before they start than try to get them back once they've got the dirt dug.
Thank you so much, William.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all of your work, for your volunteer...
So, the answer to your question is, no, I have not spent an hour on my novel.
Thank you, William. Again, his comments are referring to an agenda item later on in the meeting, where we will discuss some funding options. So, now, I'll open public comments for the rest of the public. This is a portion of the meeting for members of the public who wish to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. However, if you do want to speak about an agenda item and you have to leave, please feel free to do that. And while it's nice to know who's speaking, and for the record, you're not required to give your name or your personal address, so... Does any member of the public wish to speak? Yes, come on up. Thank you.
New Propolis McBane Avenue. In order to get any kind of bills passed in Congress or state legislatures, they always have to minimize facts of costs and exaggerate facts of capabilities. And as we just heard, this is the indication here. I want to mention something that I mentioned once again before, and that is this. Those of us that are 65 and older, and at the present time, they say that 80 years of age is the critical part, that gives us 15 years. of age is the critical part, that gives us 15 years. You can say that this guy with the handlebar moustache came before this committee and said, none of those people, 65 years and older, will ever see this going into operation. Now, for those of you that are 65 years and younger, they say this, this is only one lawsuit. As eminent domain comes in for procedures, there's going to be thousands and thousands of lawsuits that are going to extend this situation for years and years to come. The fact that we just heard that the gravel is lifted and so forth, which would undoubtedly lift the ties to the tracks and so forth, those are problems that have to be reckoned with. So, I know that we have to go ahead with our lawsuit, but I say to you very convincingly that we, I know I, because I'll be 90 in another couple of months, I will never see it, and I doubt that those of us that are over 65 will ever see it. So, rest peacefully, dream about 265, and if you want to get to Los Angeles, why then take the plane, and you'll get there in an hour's time. Thank you, and I want to thank the council, and particularly Theresa, for obtaining this hearing device for me. I can hear all of you clearly, as long as you speak into that mic. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lou, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak now? If not, we'll move on, close the public comment. Oh, sorry.
Hi, I'm Anna Little Watkins, and it's nice that you don't need people to say their name and address.
It's not required.
I asked the city attorney a question, and I didn't get an answer to, but I suspect the old finance committee didn't want to answer the following question. Was it appropriate for McKeithen to authorize expenditure of $14,000 purchase order for computer investigations without competitive bids? And I'd like to ask if there are more examples of waste, such as almost $500,000 for a library in the park that did not have voter approval, was opposed by 70% of the residents, but was done by a 3-2 council. I would like to ask the town council to send this issue, these questions, to the Finance Committee for study and comment. I am concerned that in two years, the town council could be reversed back to the 3-2 unresponsive majority that operated the way that Widmer, McKeithen, and Dubey Town Council did, and would like the current council to take action to restrict and prevent council majorities from acting in such a wasteful manner. According to a few articles that I've heard about, who has the most business acumen seems to be a very subjective issue. And now, on a more positive note, I applaud the present town council, steps for greater citizen participation and input, and hope we can move forward to have a beautiful town center, which incorporates the library near all the other vital services of this town of Atherton. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who'd like to come forward? Okay, so, I'll close public comment period right now, and we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Item number five is closed session report. We had no closed session tonight, so we have nothing to report. Item number six is our city manager's report. So, City Manager Lawrence, would you like to give your report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have the written report, I just have a couple of comments in connection to it, and then one additional item, and this is in regards to high-speed rail. Received a, an email today from Senator Hill's office with respect to an upcoming press conference Friday, February 22nd at 10:30 to introduce a bill that he has moving forward. He's going to do that at the Caltrain, Palo Alto Caltrain Station, 95 University Avenue. And his legislation talks about clarifying the $1.1 million that is appropriated, closing any loopholes with respect to transferring money away from segments of the railway, and clarifying funds that are allocated for projects in the San Francisco-San Jose segment will be used solely to implement a system that primarily consists of a two-track blended system, and creates an additional safeguard in case HSR tries to go beyond the two-track blended system in the future. That's what the press conference is about, everyone's invited to attend that. On my, in the city manager's report is a note with respect to an item later on in the agenda, for the RFP for the master planning phase for the Community Center Advisory Committee. And I just wanted to make a note that one of staff's recommendations is that the council waive the council review of the RFP so that we can keep that project moving along. But we recommend that if you do so, that you have the city council ad hoc committee assist staff in review and preparation of that RFP. There's a note with respect to the goals workshop that the March 4th one has been canceled, and you've all received an email from Theresa to try and coordinate some other dates. And then there are other items within the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have with respect to those, and there's some staff here this evening as well.
Do any members of the council have any clarifying or technical questions they'd like to ask any member about the report?
I would, not really a question, but when we talk about the council chambers' technology upgrades, just like Commissioner Polans is talking about tonight, we should not forget that we have to install some form of devices for the hearing impaired.
Yes.
Very good. Any other member, Councilmember Woodburn?
Yeah, I have a few things. First off, on the master fee schedule that's in progress, I know that we had a contract employee here, Kathleen, working on that, so we're not recreating what she's done, we've picked up what she's had, and we're just continuing and finishing. Is that...
That's correct.
...the case, okay? Also, you have an item about Rocology with their rate-setting schedule and things like that, that's all well and good, but it'd certainly be good if we could actually meet with Robert in short order to get the, the work that Kathleen did, review that, make sure that we feel good about the rates that have already been set, and then, then move forward, you know, so we have a basis to stand for. Also, lastly...